Good morning. Good morning. We're here at 9:02 on Monday, March 25th, 2019, in Park County, Texas. There we have Bob Miller from Roswell County Church. He'll do our introductions. I'll be there standing there.
All right, let me tell you just a short story about how I feel about prayer. A little boy was invited to the home of President Johnson for lunch. And at lunch, he was asked to offer thanks. The little boy started crying. President Johnson interrupted him and said, "Son, speak up. I can't hear you." The little boy said, "I'm not talking to you." I want to talk to God, not to you. My Father, it is an immeasurable privilege to come to the Creator and the Sustainer of the universe. Bring our sacrifice of praise and our petitions. Thank you for the rain that's fallen in this land. Thank you for your continuing and continual care for us individually and corporately. Thank you for freedoms and responsibilities. That was always... Remember that ultimately, we will give an account to you, help us to live in such a way that we can do that gladly and joyfully in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm in Texas, like, I'm blessed to be in Texas, well saved, under God, one and universal.
All right. First thing on the agenda this morning is a couple of minutes from March 11th, 2019, March 13th, 2019, Church Board. Judge, do you have one suggested modification? We can find the agenda, item six, of our last regularly scheduled meeting, the 47th District Attorney's Office, when there was action taken about salaries. I know certainly not in the motion, but I'm wondering if we can have something in the description that we clearly spoke to. We were not allocating these dollars for the next budget cycle. So I'm not sure if that could be added, not to the motion, because I know that that's not part of the motion. I just, we go back and reference, and we don't have that detail.
If you'll just mark it on your minutes, we have it recorded, and then we have it on. But it's just our job to capture the motion and the votes. So, but we do have it. We could pay to have that transcribed if you wanted to.
Because you only retain those for two years, is that right?
Yes.
Because we've run into that a couple of times.
But if you would like a copy, we will give you a copy, and you can retain it for as long as you want.
Okay. I would request that.
...was the government house in here, but the allocation of funds out is not from our annual collective.
Right. But where the discussion was is certainly with the lens of the employee on the other end. Let's say we enter a budget cycle, and we can't absorb that salary move, because it was only for this calendar year. From an employee's lens, that takes down then their salaries. So I just, I wanted to specifically call out that we did not commit to this next year.
Would you like a copy?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to change it.
Okay. Thank you. We're not going to change it.
No, I'll change it. Let's go back. Number two vouchers to consider, an act upon approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county office, from March 6th, 2019, through March 20th, 2019. Check number 184927 through 185155, and March 20th, 1211 through 1218, in the amount of $851,537.1 cents.
Pay the vouchers that presented.
Second, for quick discussion, I have two questions, Judge, if I may. Page 14 of 30, check number 185007, metal treatment technology, $6,000, the lead. Is this from taking the lead out of the brim, charon? And that was the first time we've ever done that, is that right? And then, are they also going to sell it and then give us revenue back? Do I remember that in the contract?
If they got above a certain amount, I think we ended up with like $200.
Okay. So the $6,000 is for them to do the work. They sell it, and we end up with $200. Okay?
We didn't get as much as we thought.
Okay. Page 18 of 30, 185136. Here, this is a... I'm not sure what page. Let's see, Brandon, I think. Information charges, Thompson Reuters, less payment. Center, is it what's that?
That's the West Loss.
Of the West Loss. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Okay. A motion, second, all in favor, Judge.
Yeah.
You raised your hand, I'm like that.
I did, I was just making sure, because since I wasn't here, I just keep going, right?
Okay. Number three, insurance reports. Is that the end issue? Okay. All right. So we're looking at, any questions on that, please? Treasurer's report, number four, the number four on lines of treasurer's report. Okay. Okay, so AMV is one, we're earning 2.60. We have $18,874,36.05. In Texas Pool, we're earning 2.41. And in Texas Pool, we have $412,551.7. Texas Pool Prime, we're earning 2.58. We have $22,449,58.96. And Texas Class, we're earning 2.60. We have $6,822,926.8. So our total cash this morning is $48,558,572.6.
Leanne, are you looking at making any moves from Prime? With the biggest dollar amount being in the lowest?
We are in mind, that's what we're keeping them pressed as well. But we've had scheduled the proper coming in and checking some other avenues to kind of broaden things and diversify. And it happened to be the day we had our hurricane, and so this is why. So, all that happens.
I didn't need a plane that day.
Trying to get home. But, yeah, so that is in the works, and we aren't looking to diversify our investments.
And are we where we expected to be compared to this time last year? In terms of cash flow?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you, Leanne. Thank you. So we recognize, number five, neighborhood planning to recognize quarter reports from the city of Amarillo regarding county funds contributing to the neighborhood projects.
So this is just a quarterly update. This is in our interlocal, between the county and the city. And so that is there for your review. The city sent that over, I would say, mid-last week. But in terms of just an update, the third neighborhood plan to kick off a couple of weeks ago in San Jacinto, standing room only. So really kind of quite exciting to see this continue. I would share what I kind of hear out of the community, is just a who knows to each member of this commissioner's court, to starting this initiative and partnering with the city.
I had a meeting with Andrew last week, and he said, "We're done." We paid our part, right?
He's probably talking about for this calendar year.
No, he's talking about, I will... He said, "We were in it for $300,000, and that's it, and we've already paid that."
I'm not sure that that's... But I'll take that, Judge. I'll take that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we recognize that. Number six, resolution, US Census Bureau, 2020, to consider an act upon a resolution supporting the US Census Bureau for the 2020 census. This is a resolution that was brought to us by the people that we had a meeting with a couple of weeks ago. And Shannon was so confident, we just thought, "Oh, it's..." And so we made a motion to do this.
I make a motion.
Oh, actually.
At the meeting, it sounded like they were wanting us to commit to some kind of action. And this resolution doesn't state any action, so that's fine. But if they expect local government to take on some responsibilities without any funding, I'd certainly be against that. Of course, I have other questions about the census.
I hope that they don't...
They need to know that how many citizens we have. I think a question on citizenship is not most important, but anyway. This resolution doesn't commit us to anything other than to support people answering their census information.
It'd be a part of the engagement, to participate with other entities, to the county, to the city, etc.
I would certainly think they would not expect us to have to put money in money in the local areas. Those two engage, I mean, that would be...
And then certainly, Judge, on the contrary side of Commissioner Church, we've all heard the presentation, but obviously, the way the census is driven, it is every person to be counted, and there are federal dollars. Texas alone gets $43 billion. So this affects us very much locally, and we have to provide services. And to me, it's really a fiscal, you know, discussion versus semantics of citizenship. So I just, I don't want us to get too in the weeds, if you will.
Okay. But non-citizens determine how many representatives will have on the federal level.
I have a non-citizens, part of, I said, they sell tax, and they are in part of the whole process of even generating revenue.
Legal non-citizens, I don't have a problem with. It's your illegal non-citizens that are costing taxpayers, or so worried about taxpayers, and yet we don't worry about that. About that, I agree with you.
That's another special one.
I certainly worry about that group.
So anyway, that doesn't have anything to do with the resolution. I'm giving you my...
All right. I make a motion that we approve a resolution supporting the United States Census Bureau for the 2020 census, as presented to the court.
Judge, a motion, second, all in favor, Judge. All right. Number seven, CJCA Conference, to hear, open day on the 9th, annual West Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference to be held in Amarillo on April 23rd, through 26th, 2019, in the city center. Mr. Church.
A month from yesterday, we'll be hosting the post-court night on the 23rd of April. This is West Texas County Judges and Commissioners Conference, the first time it's been here in Amarillo since 1976. It's 116 counties, I believe, in West Texas that belong to this association. We have pretty well decided on our events that evening. The team store is going to be, well, it's all going to be held at Hodge Town. And so people can just walk across the street from the embassy suites to go to our event. The team store is going to be open between 4:30 and 5:00, if anyone wants to go. The rest of the event will open up the gates about 5:30, start serving a meal at 6:00. We have the coati dancers that are going to perform from 6:00 to 6:30. We have a band coming in at 6:30, and we'll be playing music for your listening pleasure or dance.
Who's the band?
Quite just... Something cheats in the borderline.
Something cheats?
Bin cheats, I think. Bin cheats in the borderline band.
Okay. Are you talking about Commissioner, you're talking about Tuesday night or a Wednesday night?
That's a Tuesday night, the 23rd.
Okay. Thank you.
So, anyway, they'll be playing from 6:30 to 9:30, and then we're going to try to chase everybody home.
So you said that they would just walk across straight to the embassy? Who's going to be at the embassy? I thought it was the person.
Yeah, that's the headquarters, okay.
That's how...
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
That's where registration and everything happens. Funding-wise, we did really well. I think we collected from everyone that said they were going to donate, except for one business, and we'll get that money. But anyway, we're doing really well. We may need your help for that evening to pass out. We're going to have raffle drawings, two to three raffle drawings, so we need to end that tickets. Need to have some people at the gate to check people in. Unless they have their name badge, we're not going to let them in, so. We need to coordinate that almost, if we may need the all-in-one. So we'd like your help that evening, for sure.
Is there anything Wednesday night that you need our help with?
No. That's the only thing.
That's the only night.
That's one thing that we have.
And then what about during the welcome session? Are we doing anything as a governing body to say thank you to Potter County? I just, I want to make sure we're all...
I got a letter the day saying, "Thank you for agreeing to do the opening ceremony." I still remember agreeing to do that, but of course I will.
The sheriff's honor guard, provide the honor guard for the flag.
Thank you.
And let's see, we have a young lady that's going to sing the National Anthem. She is, I think, a student at Cap Rock.
How much money did you collect, just out of interest?
I think around $26.
Dollars or a thousand?
Sorry.
It's like, thank Commissioner.
Yeah, and thank you.
It's not an easy thing.
And the CDC, no?
All right. Thank you. Number eight, change fund, to consider an act upon increasing the change fund for JP number two, from $100 to $200, allowed by local government code, N300902. I'm assuming you just didn't have enough cash in there to give out change.
Correct. Is that consistent with other JPs, or?
Some of them have $100, and JP3 actually has $300. We are seeing a lot of traffic in JP2.
I'm going to agree, change fund for Justin Pace, present two, $100 to $200.
Okay.
A motion, second, all in favor, Judge. Number eight, certificate of completion, to recognize 2018 certificates of completion, of clients for continuing education, public funds investment, and certificate of membership in the county investment academy for 2018. That's within, make commission. Okay. Number nine, juror information management system, to consider an act upon request to upgrade the current jury software, add jury to GM's juror information management system at a cost of $16,115. Money can come from equipment there in replacement accounts, as you can hardly... Okay. Kim and Laura have done a lot of research on this, and our folder hasn't been working for quite some time. It's been out for at least two or three years.
Do you really think they're dead?
Yes.
And...
It's irreplaceable. I mean, we can't replace it. Kim's done a lot of... There are no... Yeah. The cost to replace it, we're trying to use to offset replacing the jury. Adding the jury information to it, too. Right. And we checked with, we had a conference called with Grayson County, which is a county about our size, and they've been implementing this particular program for nine years. And they have a, about a 70% return rate for good jurors. As we said, right now, we have about a 50% return rate on juror summonses, but actually, we have 30% good juror rate. So what we're trying to do is go to offset paper summonses, the postcards, which is, we set, we set out a full paper, but now we would like to go to postcards. There's other counties that are our size that are going to postcards, and this will allow them to answer questions over the phone, because not everybody has the internet. We already have the internet set up, but this will allow each juror to qualify themselves over the phone. And it's a 24/7. It's a 24/7. Which means they'll operate the phones, they can still call and talk to a live person, but they can qualify their jury services via a touch-tone phone.
So they have to walk through their process, using...
Yes. Yes. It will prompt them, ask them questions, they'll push one for this, two for this, or they can go online, of course, we already have the option now to fill out for someone, instead of sending out, for them to return their summonses that way. They'll have the option to do everything over their phone. So why do you think that's 30% is the only good jurors? Why do you think that it's not county? I think we have a lot of, I think a lot of people move between Potter and Rainbow County. I also think that we, the baby boomers are becoming 70.
Okay.
I think we also have a lot of more, maybe more theft or felony convictions in Potter County that don't allow us to use those. And a lot of young adults with children that are age 12, they have an exception for that.
So you're saying with this technology, instead of the three-fold form that you normally tear off and send back in, fill out your little options on the back, and if you want to donate it, instead of that, it's a postcard, so that you...
It's a two-step postcard.
Okay.
I actually brought... First, we'll send out a notification that they will go online and re-qualify themselves. And then after we get all qualified people, then we'll actually send out the second postcard, summons them to come on a certain day. Because people already know that they're qualified via phone or the internet. And then, and then that would also eliminate the cost for return envelopes, that would spend a lot of money, you pay for that. I have it all working down here, what, how much we'll say doing it this way and adding that system.
You said it's been down for how long?
It's been, it's been totally dead for the last year, but we haven't been able to stuff any envelopes for almost three years now. So we will fold it, and then we physically go in and stuff the 3,000, usually about 1,000 to 1,500 envelopes a week.
So is there any reason that didn't come up during budgeting?
No. That's what I was going to say.
I'm like the only person here about that, because it was still being able to fold. And Laura and I had kind of talked back and forth earlier on about, you know, if this thing is going out, you know, what other, you know, option that we have in the software, people have already had given her some information, and I think we just, I think the consensus was to wait until it's turned.
Okay. And she's here.
And really what prompted this is when they said they can't fix the machine anymore, there are no more parts. So I got the information, and I went online, and it is no longer available, this machine, parts are no longer available. So we asked Kelly to give us an estimate on to purchase a new one, and, you know, you can either purchase it or even lease it. And that prompted the next question to Laura, well, if we're going to spend $10,000 to $12,000 on this folding and turning machine, let's look at the postcard thing that we had been kind of touching on the last couple of years. And so my high school man put together how much, because I pay the bills, how much our business reply mail is, our permit, the maintenance of it, ordering all those envelopes. Right now, we order, I do it twice a year, 30,000 jury summonses, 30,000 business reply envelopes, 30,000 window envelopes. That's for one, in all three of those compartments, for one jury, jury summons. And why not eliminate all of that, you know, and bring it down to where we can pre-qualify these jurors in advance, instead of them showing up and then having, you know...
And now, just for one jury?
For one, well, those three items, the full page, front and back, jury's own...
It's front, back, jury summons.
That we have to print, and with the business reply mail envelope, so that they can fill it out and send it back, which is a dollar six per, compared to 35 cents per postcard. And then the window envelopes to stuff all that in and send to one juror, compared to a postcard.
$60,000 of that in here.
Judge, I'm assuming you're responding to this.
If you would agree to do it, and then have the equipment, repair and replacement, we have about $80,000.
Do we have any idea about the maintenance after you get the program the first year? Did I miss that?
It's the same, it's at the bottom.
Or right there, the 5,000?
It's 5,200 a year, and that would remain the same.
And is that, do you have enough in your budget to absorb that today, like, for next year?
Uh, yeah, we've already paid for this, but it's part of our budget every single year for the maintenance of the jury software.
Okay.
It's the same company.
So that's not increasing with you adding this on?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
We're getting winded. You were good. I moved to...
You are.
Moved to upgrade the, to the county jury software, add jury to the GMMS, and... ...60,000, $115,000, managed to come for equipment repair, and replace the equipment, 11 dot 1150 dot 76520 dot 2250. 500,000, I don't care.
Give a second. A motion, second, all in favor, Judge.
Thank you. Will you keep us posted on how that's going?
Yeah.
I think probably an education to the public would probably be worth it.
We're going to do a public announcement.
Okay.
We're going to do it probably radio, TV, also on our homepage, and we're going to put that on there as well. So we are, and we're going to start announcing it now to get everybody ready.
Okay.
Number 10, Texas Association of Counties, to consider an act upon CIRA service agreement regarding the Potter County website.
Our annual prosper posting this year.
Okay.
Katie, the whole agreement, the whole package has their whole portfolio of what they offer. We do, just to make sure I brought my notes, so we do the standard webpage, website package, which is 800 per year. That's what we do now.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the CIRA service agreement regarding Potter County website.
Have a motion, second, all in favor. Number 11, event parking management proposals, to consider an act upon parking lot management proposals submitted by the Course Code, DBA Crowe Property Maintenance for management of after-hours event parking on county on lots of 60 or more in 16 years.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a proposal that really got a feeling by my, I wasn't taking credit for it, but it was just kind of... This is important, I'm here at Crowe Property, they've been in business for about seven years. He has currently got parking lot maintenance contracts throughout the baseball season, and happy state bank, Pat Davis property, who I think we're down here, and I'm going to let him talk about numbers and what it looks like to do business with Potter County. I just kind of wanted to introduce him in the background, I haven't saw him before. It was actually the cold call. It was actually the cold call and, uh, I think it's a good call, so this is Mr. Ford.
Thank you for your, your time. I wanted to make a proposal. We've got, uh, soft rules coming in and it's meant to be a full house. Uh, all the tickets for the first week have been sold out. And then you're looking also at, um, multiple events, so there's two dozen of those that are taking place at the same time, uh, of the baseball games. So, uh, parking is of course been quite a discussion for Amaral over the last few months. Because the soft, I'm then excited about that opportunity. But I wanted to at least present to the county, you know, uh, the management side of that. Instead of being inundated without control, free-for-all managing, uh, this east lot as well as the south lot on behalf of the county. It would be an opportunity for the county to bring in some resources based on occupancy, uh, of those stalls. Typically, a parking lot is about eighty percent capacity. Sometimes you have cars that stay overnight, sometimes, uh, it is going to have numbers, but usually it's about eighty percent capacity. You have a lot of parking lots have other ten stalls and one hundred seven, I believe. We would manage those and, uh, the fifteenth each month, uh, pay what we'll call a lease agreement with, uh, Potter County, uh, to, uh, based on occupancy. Uh, we would also follow up at the end of the season with, uh, your facilities director. And we put in those numbers as well. Um, first of all, uh, if we come in and grease drive or replace a parking block or maybe a sign got run over, uh, something we didn't perceive, we would come in as Crowe Property and, uh, uh, update that, clean that up. Also, that includes cleaning up after, that was, uh, that we have a team that goes through the lots, picks up and cleans up and, uh, make sure they're ready for the next day. Uh, there are seventy-two events scheduled, uh, with the state this time. Now that could go up, uh, so there's a little bit of flexibility there. They have seventy games. So, uh, we have been working with, uh, Jay Danforth as well as Tony with the soft rules, trying to coordinate this a little bit so we're all on the, uh, same page. We like to have a little flexibility, uh, on the pricing. For Amaral, we're not used to, uh, paying for parking. I don't know if y'all heard that. Um, but we're not used to paying for parking. So we're gonna, uh, kind of adjust, uh, our, our, our prices based on where the soft rules are at and based on, uh, on the needs. But I think that gave you, uh, a price, I think it was six dollars. I'm sorry, we're being a little too cheap on, so they started to, uh, uh, on point. But I wanted to answer any questions or maybe, uh, we adjusted our, our, our lease, but we're not signed on. Uh, I think it was, uh, tad, that's on the, uh, observation basis. We adjusted the lease according to some of the things that we've seen in the, uh, season. But want to answer any questions or feel those questions if you have any, recommendations, thoughts, ideas? Seventy-one, yes.
What about the number two event?
Uh, they're looking at having, uh, a concert or two. Those are not in concrete. In fact, I believe that Paramount, that's confusing, or something. And I wanted to put in a couple of extra events because I know that we're talking about having a couple of evening events or some dates about to say.
So, something I'd like to add, like came up earlier, of the event, the judges event, that's in the baseball season. So we, there is gonna be a learning curve, you know, going to the state night or, uh, an event on a weekend that will kind of depart on. It's gonna be six dollars as well. The judges, um, I can't remember what the name is.
County judges and commissioners.
So changing people partner, there's gonna be attendance, there's gonna be, with the agreement, there's gonna be an M V D, you know, rolling around. So we just, it's gonna be a learning curve the first year, become a pilot, you know.
So a couple of ques, oh, I'm sorry, I think we'll go.
What is the city gonna do around the, uh, city hall?
Uh, that has been given over to the founding members. Uh, as far as city hall, that's still in discussion. The civic center and all of that is, be given to the soft rules. They have about twelve hundred stalls that they are managing. That is.
Six, I think it's six. Because of the L G C, um, the L G C just took a motion last week to allow soft rules to give a package, if you will, to season ticket holders to get access into the parking garage. And so I think some of the prime spots, that price point was seven. And so then some of the discussion is what was the surrounding property around it? So it's six around it and then seven inside the parking garage for a full, you know, the, the max amount of time.
Yes.
Is that correct, Judge?
That's what I understand.
So is the attendance kind of collecting in it?
Yes.
Do, do I understand that's right, that we get two dollars and twenty cents a person?
Yes, sir.
For parking space.
Great, I agree. Yes, sir, it is, it's two dollars and twenty cents. Uh, is that on both, I believe that's on.
Well, it's online to eighteen.
Yes, based on, yes. And so that, we had to break it down. Every parking lot's different, the distance is different, the structure is different. So every parking lot had to take on its own identity and the price point. First of all, that is, we get to do it effectively.
So a couple of questions. When you talk about the eighty-six stall capacity, which footprints are you looking at? Was that both?
As both.
Eighty-six stall capacity. And let me make sure I'm understanding the framework here. You're saying from five P M till eleven P M, all days of the week?
Just during the game.
Just during a game?
Just during the game.
Or an event?
Just during the games. We are committed just with the games. If there's not a soft rule, game, parking is not usually gonna be an issue. There's people or just dealing with the other, so allowed them to show up during the game.
Except, um, maybe a concert.
Except for a concert, this is a sub two.
So those two, maybe.
Yes.
And I think what's different, um, but, but don't quote me on this, what's different about the downtown parking? I think their time starts from six P M onward. Because there was a public comment last week saying, well, I don't get there at five-thirty. So just so that, you know, we kind of have timeline parameters. Um, do you think just during a event, you'll have staff at all entry points, like safety?
Safety gear, the phones will be up, the diapers will be up, uh, and they're not there to be anybody trying to get out. They're just trying to control what comes in. Our set of time, and I said five, our set of time from, uh, well, I actually probably take it to here closer to five or five minutes in place.
Okay.
I hope, we had the same question with Abby State.
And that would give the employees and the neighbors how to get out, you know, from the parked ones.
And then the price point, the cost breakdown that you have, you have thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two?
At eighty percent, that's for the entire season.
And, um, does that dollar amount reduce your share or that is the amount that would go to the county, the thirty-seven thousand?
No, you, uh, go up to the line, I know what it says.
That's the thirteen thousand.
Right.
Okay. So the county would get thirteen thousand roughly?
A lot, roughly, yes, I think that's a lot.
One's a little higher than the other.
Yes.
The larger thirty-seven number, that's how much, potentially eighty percent, that's how much the parking lot is generating.
Yes.
Can you hook the thirty-seven, the?
The thirty-eight, eight, eighty on the district, for parking.
Put that, uh, in our, Potter County, like eighty percent capacity, thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six.
And then a question I had for Chris before we started, Commissioner's Court is, since this really was an unsolicited bid, if there are any procurement laws around, do we need to put this out for an R F P? We weren't really looking for someone, to my knowledge. Like we need to take or go action on the court to go out and look for someone? Is there any procurement protocol we need to follow? Fairly unprecedented for us.
Yeah, it's under the, the, a lot of, I mean, it's under, okay. It's not really, we're not buying any, so I don't know if it's going to fall under.
Yeah, I'm not sure, it's just very unprecedented, so asking a question.
I, I guess I would have to look at the, the local government law to see. It would fall under, under, under chapter two sixty-three, the local government. Those are procedures that we follow. The county's gonna sell property. However, there is only a provision for lease of advertising space on county property where you have to follow a particular process, otherwise it's not addressed.
Okay, it's great.
You should play golf this weekend.
Maybe.
No comment. It's so bad you were all worms, that matter.
Carrie, Chris, do you guys have concerns from urine or have we not seen?
I, I don't really see any concerns.
I mean, I know this was fairly in short order, so I just, I always get a little anxious when there's not a lot of time to get all of the elements of the conversation on the table.
If, if we're gonna do this, this would be a one-year deal.
Yeah, just one, just one year.
Kind of a pilot season, right?
Well, because the whole infrastructure will change, right?
So how do you control the, uh, the monies that go to the attendants? How do you, are you able to keep up that they're not stuffing something possible?
Oh, I did the same question. And, uh, we have a ticket that's given out. So, and also we have a supervisor that, uh, we've set up that now it counts lots, counts tickets, ticket and dollars on a match as well as a number of cards that are in that lot before they start and after. So, yeah.
Better have control.
Yes, we do have control.
Will the county have a, uh, a report of how many, well, during the payment, will we have, will the county have a report of how many tickets are sold or how many?
Exactly, we see many matches as well. Plus, uh, the points that we cut the check and the fees you receive, forty-four, uh, each night of sales. There's only, um, stalls were occupied, a small portion of them, proceeds that came in at that point.
And one other question, you know, we have people that live in ballpark and sometimes it might be a little bit degrading.
Yes.
And sometimes they do, uh, damage to whatever might be in that, uh, our parking lot. Do you have insurance or?
Yes, it was gender-based, I will cover that. As well as I go back in that maintenance, if something has run over a Torah, we'll work with, wait. And, uh, make this way, don't get it, just put back, do what.
What, what is the, what is the, the, they just, they just said they're gonna be patrolling lots?
Right, they're gonna be, we have them patrolling Happy State Bank lots every thirty to forty minutes. I don't know if there's any lots that were wanting to, uh, lease in contract with those who say.
Are you robbing them?
No. And that's something that Abby State requested as well. And of course, we've got two attendants on every lot. We're managing it from, you know, five to eleven, basically. Our attendants are there from five to eight, but then I have a crew that follows up, uh, after that, so.
Okay, may I have one more question for you, Judge Taylor?
Uh, I would speak against the, the proposal. Number one, it's government property. Uh, citizens should not pay a park on government property on weekends, uh, weeknights. Uh, I'd also have a question when they have a rain out, when they play a doubleheader and those games start at two, three o'clock in the afternoon, what that does to our parking? Uh, we already got the signs up around down, around here where you can't park without paying. So that was one reason why I wanted extra money in our, in our budget to, uh, so we wouldn't have to send people to pay for parking places. You have to have the correct change, then they have to leave, come back, pay parking again. But that, uh, I, I will agree with the parking around our two court buildings, where Santa Fe is all marked for hour parking, two-hour parking. And I think we're just gouging our citizens. And where, where does it stop?
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that concern. My concern, on the, on the same note, uh, is what's, what's not controlled becomes chaos. And, uh, I don't, I think we're all kind of, uh, looking at going, what's gonna happen here? And, uh, I'm saying if, uh, if it, it will be, it will be filled. It will be filled, what capacity, uh, I don't know. Uh, to what control, none if we choose what to have. And, and, and I understand, uh, you know, paying one more thing for one more thing. Uh, we're a growing city and, uh, to be honest with you, I parked in Dallas last week and paid twenty-five bucks. Still have to go three blocks. And, uh, not that we're Dallas, I want to be, but it does take some resources to maintain.
Um, Judge, uh, Taylor, I, I agree with some of that commentary. Those were some of my initial thoughts as we started talking about parking and downtown parking. And what does it look like specifically for the county? Because our property tax is really what pays for us to build the, this type of infrastructure. So the analogy I gave is, well, you're charging me to park in my driveway and I built the house, and I built the house. It's my house, you know, so that's kind of the analogy. I think for me personally, uh, since it is very specific around events only and, uh, such a small section, we're not talking about every Monday through Friday that having those lots monitored and somebody, you know, paying for parking downtown on the weekends. We're not talking about that model, um, only specifically for the events. So I think that was, you know, part of why I'm kind of at least wrestling with the other side because I really had a very similar thought that you did.
One of my concerns is, one baseball season that parking lot unmanaged can get torn up, the grass, you know, so. People, if everyone else is charging and we're not, they're gonna flood and we can lead guards in the free lot as they can. You don't wanna be the one charging, but you also don't wanna be the one taming the market by not charging, you know.
Well, we're not forcibly able to park on that parking lot anyway, so it's up to their option.
Sure.
Okay, any else? We have a motion.
Move to, uh, approve the parking lot grant proposals submitted by Rick Force Small. Uh, as I said, pro property event maintenance, for management after hours again, working on the county on lots of six and field goal at six acres. Second.
Number twelve, be able to insurance sheriff's office. Consider next from the insurance coverage of an undercover being go for sheriff's office. Be able to purchase from partnership funds.
This is adding to the fleet.
Well, we've got, last year, we've had three vehicles, so we are adding a vehicle to the, to the three that we've got.
So three off, you're adding one?
Is there anything else you would like to say? I just wanted to look at your face, so I can keep smiling. It's unusual when you're smiling. Okay, any questions on that?
We, we approved the insurance coverage for the sheriff's office, be able to purchase.
I guess it's out of the question to ask you what the car is.
I have a session, I think.
I don't want it that, okay, it's got four wheels.
As long as it's not.
Number.
Long as it's not what?
No, as long as it's not a heavy sports car with a high price point on insurance.
Number thirteen. Number thirteen, equipment purchase, sheriff's office to consider an act upon purchase of digital ticket, electronic ticketing solution. Total equipment and software service cost for three years, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Purchase under self-source. Plans to come from for available for the trophy on JP three IT budget. Who's talking on this?
Morning.
Morning.
The digital ticket is a, like I said, an electronic way to issue citations and warnings, uh, and also invite cards, delivery cards. It's a, again, it's an electronic way that can scan driver's license there, which gives the information in there. Correct, it's, it's, and all that. The, uh, safety of doing as far as the officer out there on the street, it's quicker, they can actually scan the registration sticker on most states registration stickers. And it gets the information into the system. Once it's in the system, our, our, that actually taps in on the tickets, has a little bit, the handwritten ticket, which a lot of officers have for that anyway. So they're trying to figure out what they're, what they're, uh, gunning down to enter into the system. Prevent that, that being these ready. They'll save very time not having to enter in all that information, all the tickets, if I mean, all the fight cards that come in. So, uh, once it's, once it's loaded into the system or scanning, they get scanning the registration, the, uh, JV's court can also get that information to their, their system. So it flows into Spelman and it flows into the official, what's your, that's your. So we had put in for this for our JAG grant, but for two years, we, we haven't got our JAG grant for two years because of, I can't say what I said. But we're still getting it. It's just depend on when it, uh, again, for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And that's where, that's the way we paid for it. Since we didn't have that, we did speak to Judge and ask him if he would share the, the cost. We would have to, uh, it's what the cost of it, which it's not a, it's kind of like a page you go to. We can cancel it at any time or not buy any equipment. And we just, they just give us equipment, the software and everything, and we use it. I think it's sixty days notice to cancel if it's ever made, if we don't like it. We don't want to pay for anything, it is all set in months. So we're looking at it for sixty-nine days to give that to them. So, uh, we were gonna go ahead and pay out of our forfeiture accounts. I remember I think we're gonna get our JAG money within that month time, so we won't have to, you know, pay out of that account. But again, Judge Jackson is gonna kind of take the part of that.
You're pretty confident that the JAG money, uh?
What I was told, the, the JAG grant is a, excuse me, is a, is a grant that's actually, that's the city that's in for it. We have also, uh, plenty in our information to, to share the, the grant. It has been, I guess, it's, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. It does go up and down, so, uh, and it's yours. But right now, the, the city's liking to pay for it. So once they get that, you know, we should, the, what I've been told is the money's there, they just have to pay, pay for it before they release the money. So however, like I said, we will use our forfeiture account if that doesn't come through. You can pay, uh, if you pay for it in advance, you get four percent discount, the, uh, the cost per year, three, six thousand, nine hundred. So we also have to pay an additional fee because to get it toward Spelman, they want their cuts. So we have to pay Spelman to, I want to have a fee of twelve thousand, five hundred for that.
And Gary, this is for all four courts, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so in the proposal, it talks about that it only includes fifteen, I'll just call them tablets, if you will. Who will have the bank card that they will go to?
Patrol officers or individual officers. Or SROs. The SROs, they'll usually buy tickets or business, like in the summertime, three months if they're not in school, they come out of patrol.
So this won't include the constables for the fifteen tablets? Um, and then what about?
They don't, they don't buy, they don't buy very few. It's not cost effective.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an understanding of the fifteen and who they'll go to. The, uh, where will this infrastructure reside on? Like Katie, I'm thinking about like, a lot of times we get these software purchases, um, especially on actual devices. And I worry about two things in my mind, if it's living on a, on a server and then a lot of times.
It's there, it's there, it's up in the cloud. And then we, we go in on Spelman and pull from the cloud to drop them into the school.
Even if it's in the cloud, it's still a, at a server somewhere, whether it's on their end or our end. And so I don't know if there's any IT requirements. I'm assuming none to y'all's knowledge, I don't know if.
Brandon was heavily involved in the project. He talked to me about it a little bit, but I don't, I don't know a lot to speak in detail. I think it is hosted on their, their end. Um, yeah, there's minimal equipment or, or, uh, set up on our end, so.
When you pull this, I can say it too, it's Spelman server.
And then I think about, um, bandwidth in the patrol vehicles. So when I, when I imagine their whole setup with everything they use today, right? And then you add this additional component, a lot of times their bandwidth has to be increased, whatever they're using to connect to any of that. Has any of that been assessed? Do we know if that bandwidth can handle it?
I don't believe, will, but when I pay in, uh, we're paying our safety and DMS.
The mobile, the, the car.
It's, it's, so there's not any additional cost as far as, I don't, I don't think.
Well, there's not, because it's on, the, the only time they're gonna be bandwidth is when they download, they deal with the end of ship. What I'm sure that would be done after.
I'd imagine even if they scan it in and it's, it's pulling from the driver's license and probably what it's doing is importing and kind of doing a screen screen. But I'd imagine as they're sliding it in and putting it, I've not seen this technology, but then they're still pulling in components. So even if you have unlimited data, a lot of times what you'll run into is speed, right? Like, so I'm just trying to call out, because I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of what actually.
I don't believe it will, but again.
And then what about the maintenance, um, expense?
It's all, it's all, if the, uh, on breaks, it's, it's, it's a cost.
But that's.
They pay for the, they pay for the, they use for the, the current. The software here, for Spelman is two thousand, three hundred nine dollars a year. And that's if you have a module for Spelman.
So for just this, it's two thousand more for this module, is that? Okay. Now, will that come out of y'all's budget? Whose budget? Sheriff's office versus the JP tech.
Ours, recover, I, and our current, you know, so there's a lot of increase.
And then one last question, it talked about import fees to, uh, your tech share program? That that would be extra?
That's covered in the, in the middle also.
And when you say covered in the, in your, you mean, in your current budget, you have enough money in there to cover that?
No. I don't have money for that. The current Emano, they're charging us.
Okay.
It's gonna, it's gonna fall under that.
And then Carrie, how much is in the, the JP technology fund?
Hundred fifty-seven thousand.
A hundred and fifty-seven thousand? And what is y'all split? Cause I think you have a hundred and.
Eighteen each. I mean, this is per year, we're not paying a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Right, I'm just for, for year. What are you saying?
Chief, you are, uh, are committed to paying out of your walk on the JAG, uh, to, to level, if you are generated, you, 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 uh, if you do that, the JAG money does come through, that'll be more tax, your walk, your, that's what we're gonna, we're gonna. If we had, we had, and, and, and she said, we can, there's one time in a, but sometimes it's a little complicated, we kind of, they accepted it, what happened, when they accepted it? So, but we can, we can.
No, it depends on when the grant is awarded, as long as we got order, we have the grant supported, whether we have the money or not.
And from what I have heard, but, but, the, 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 the grant, as it's awarded, as long as they're.
Move to approve the purchase of digital ticket, digital ticketing solution. Total equipment, software service, cost for three years, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Purchase under self-source, funds to come from federal forfeiture account and JP three IT budget.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, Dan. Fourteen, depository contract treasurer to consider an act upon authorizing the purchasing department to advertise a deposit application for bank deposit. Who's gonna, Chris, you wanna talk on this or?
I, we just need you guys to, you guys. You guys. Y'all.
Y'all. Okay, so you tell us who brought this on or any details?
It's the, the bit.
A little bit.
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion that we authorize the purchasing department to advertise a request for applications for a bank depository.
Please.
Motion, second, all in favor? Number fifteen, funding for the district court's building project to discuss, consider all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of deposit and taxes certificates of obligation series twenty nineteen, including the adoption and order authorizing the issuance of subsequent.
Is, uh, Andrew, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
They asked if capable to sign until later this afternoon, the bond underwriter for the mortgage as of ten AM, they're gonna order a quarter period until about thirty AM. Once they have one, that work period, get the, assess the demand and make any adjustments to the, the structure of the deal, adjusting interest rates, et cetera. And then we would hope to be back at two PM to reconvene the commissioners for.
We can set three.
I know we had set three, we visited, uh, this morning. If you don't wanna keep at three PM, that would be fine, uh, for you all scheduled. If you wanna come reconvene at two PM, we believe we'll be ready. How long will it take to complete? I'm sorry, how long will it take to complete when we come back? Uh, as quickly as it takes to read the agenda, either go in favor, uh, of it, I think that would be it. The judge will have lots to, all the documents to sign after the fact, uh, but that would be just for the, we're still working two.
We could do two, I can do two.
You mean?
Yeah.
I can do two.
All moves in.
I'll have two, what it is.
So I do have a question, just to make sure we have frame work. So for, in terms of what's in the market, right? So today, the bonds are out there being sold fifty-four million.
Forty-four million dollars, only thirty years of.
I'm sorry, yes, certificates of obligation, let me clarify, yes.
Fifty-four million dollars of COs in the market, thirty-year amortization, they'll be callable in ten years at a six rate. Uh, one of the things that, that, uh, we've done is we're holding, uh, we've done the negotiated bond sale because banks, local banks express an interest, uh, in being able to purchase these bonds as well as making the bonds, uh, available to investors who live within the Amarillo area. And so they are, the negotiated bond sale, they're running a local, uh, priority of orders, meaning that, uh, you turn in a bond order, uh, and you live within the, the part it, it comes, uh, you would have priority over investor in New York. Uh, and so the hope there is that, uh, being able to get bonds in the hands of folks around here in Washington. So I hope to be able to give you a, a good update on the participation from, uh, the banks and the individual investors.
And what was our final bond rating going to the market?
Uh, we were downgraded, uh, this year from double A to double A minus. Double A minus still very, very strong rating. Uh, standard and force expressed concern with, uh, where we were stacking up, uh, on the economic level, uh, with our peers in the double A minus category, closer to the Bay Harbor County. And so the socio-economics are different between, uh, Randall County and Colorado County, and that's played against us. Uh, and then adding on fifty-four million dollars, the debt also doesn't help that. But I, I, I would say in my conversation with the, this war for, from, looking at the socio-economics, uh, of the county, I think it's still peers, more so than the debt, but those are the two.
And no surprising that, uh, I'm searching for the word, I want to say frustrated, but that's not the right word, because the most significant, um, COs that we take out, of course, you want them to be the double A rating versus the double A minus.
So there's an interest, from a pricing perspective, uh, we are going to get almost identical interest rates because there is so little supply of bonds in the market. Our underwriting desk is not utilizing all of this, that there's such a demand, uh, that you're gonna get the exact same level of interest, uh, at double A minus as you go from double A. And that wouldn't always be true, but just the way the market, I mean, it's all right now.
That's it.
So.
And then are there any other, um, any other commentary outside of the interest rate? Which is obviously the most important, is the interest rate. But is there anything, um, that funnels from that, from the downgrade, from the double A minus? You know, anything else in terms of?
No, I mean, certainly.
Changes the structure at any point?
No, no, it, it doesn't change anything. Certainly, we hope that over the next, probably five years, we get that, uh, rating back. It's gonna depend, uh, on all the city wealth levels come up, city property values appreciate, uh, more in line with, with peers throughout the country that are double A. Not just Randall County, but there's, there's comparison, you know, there are maybe, uh, and then similar to. So, uh, there's no other implication to that. Uh, we may necessarily, necessary continue disclosure files related to that downgrade, with more people aware of it. Um, and we kind of hope to, to be able to get that back, uh, over the next several years, but I certainly not planning to be too determined at the moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
I think we do have one citizen that would like to, to come forward and say. Good morning, Ellen.
Good morning.
Just please state your name and your address.
Um, I'm going twenty-six oh one North Brandon Street.
You have two minutes, sir.
I do have a question about this project. If the commissioners' court decided to use some of the funds for a purpose pertaining to justice, but not specifically for a court's building, would that be permitted by law? And if necessary, what would the commissioners' court have to do in order to obtain that sort of permission?
I'm not sure I understand your question, one more time.
Suppose that instead of taking that entire amount, the fifty-four million dollars that the county will obtain if you go ahead with this bond this afternoon, the county decided instead to take a portion of that to be used for a county court's building, but another portion of it for some other purpose that might pertain to the justice system, but not specifically to a court's building? Let's say for the sake of argument, you decided that you needed some kind of work done on county jail, or you decided to create a new jail specifically for persons who were not contributors of funds, instead of spending the entire amount on a court's building? Would that be permitted under the, uh, bond issue as it has been written?
It is not.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Okay, so we'll come back to number fifteen in two o'clock, second. Then number sixteen, employment hours to consider act on all employment hours records management.
The retirement of Rhonda Johnson is one of the first effective March twenty nine, twenty nineteen. Elections, the hiring of Linda Humphrey is temporary, old to purchase and replacement in Sheldon, Sheldon, one, twenty nineteen. Maintenance facility to transfer Pedro Chris Serna as mechanic technician three, assistant director of facilities, March twenty four, twenty nineteen. Road bridge transfer of Eddie Sparza as crew leader to operator one effective March nineteen, twenty nineteen. And the transfer of Dave Killip as operator one to crew leader effective March nineteen, twenty nineteen, requesting for Eddie Sparza.
I move to approve the items are stated by the judge.
Thank you.
Okay, motion in second, I need to raise your hand. Um, zero, Sandra. We have Rhonda's certificate here.
I have it, we'll scan it.
Okay, did you wanna come up and say anything about Rhonda or just give her a word and say bye bye?
Uh, a lot of people may know Rhonda and we, it's been like, right off.
She's worked in just about every department in this county in the last nineteen years, so. Page two, all right, thank you. Okay. Do you have a question? Um, do you have a project you wanna introduce yourself to?
Uh, yeah, there's just a few things I'm running.
Okay, come on.
I'll hurry.
No problem.
Uh, we're talking about parking, Santa Fe, we've got some Kulin Tower issues. Uh, there was a, as soon as we can call, there was a fire. Anyhow, you have, uh, the Kulin Towers, they have about twenty years in life. Back to see, and they're getting to that point. We have a few plans that are out about now. So our current contractor, I've got just a few quotes for family there. They're, 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 they're Kulin Tower. Uh, just for the family, we're looking at around forty five thousand. And, uh, I'm just gonna put something new on the piece of equipment that you should replace. I have a, I have a, I have a, you know, so you know, I'm just throwing on that. Uh, damage from the wind, uh, we're, uh, early in the insurance, sorry. Adjuster's hands right now, we met, put it through Chris and, uh, had three buildings that had new property that have moved in. The addition center was the same one, but we have to get temporarily repaired fast. I'm assuming I'll turn that over to, to Dempsey now, but that's. Is that right? You want Dempsey handle that? Yeah? Well. Right, I just didn't know if you wanted me still or if you want Dempsey, I don't wanna. We'll work on that. That's, that's temporary, that's on.
With expensive damage out there.
Either, if, I would say it tore the roof off, over C and E pods and share call. We had to get it replaced the very next day because of the rain and the flood of the pods and we had to pay to transfer it. The only other thing that we lost other than those older structures, including, uh, road bridge has a, I think, Sebastian, is that a wash bay?
Yes.
Okay. They've got a metal. One of the walls just worked itself loose and so that's actually doing it as well. Just that's the same. We, we lost one, we lost a bay down and probably the tower. Thank you really. Yeah, it was, it was a. We're working on getting the reserve signs.
District, district courses.
Parking lot, parking lot.
Well, we've just been a little mixed up in parking, so, um, we'll get it fixed. I'll make Thursday and you'll just make today, it's done.
Nothing's changing, it's just. Call our chair, it's not that we need reserves, we need reserves.
Okay, thank you.
The admin, the admin doing, the admin doing hell of a pretty good.
Oh, the L A C, the new one? Yeah.
The other's not old. It's small.
Well.
It is young grass.
I never thought it was a tree.
I saw your concern when you went, oh, because we lost roof. Granted, we lost part of the roof, but that roof is just covering mechanical underneath. The, the jail cell itself didn't lose the roof.
They should be like that.
But it is, but it is concrete and there are seams there. And if it had rained, if we hadn't covered that grain, it would have filled in, it would have fallen into the cell. So that's why we had to get it, uh, we would have had to find room for about three hundred people. We don't wanna do that. We can find room for twenty.
Okay, thank you. Number eighteen, gentlemen, for the year, we're one in our county, so we have five hundred and twenty seven people in there right now, seventy three of those are women. Uh, eighty three percent felonies, twelve percent is to me. And just so you'll know, Sheriff, uh, I was at a meeting last week, uh, saw the commissioner from Armstrong County. They're gonna come and ask us if they can put their one prisoner in our jail. And I said absolutely, obviously a problem with that.
I knew that that was coming, I had, I had a conversation with the, it's the deputy over there, so she was just bringing us up. They're talking about completely closing their day.
Yeah, they're in the closet, they still have not found their guy.
We'll have to do, uh, we'll do it in a, you know, we have to do that. Uh, I'm thinking I will probably gonna do something similar to what the city and the county has. We'll say do eight X nine bids for X nine dollars.
I just didn't know if you knew that was coming.
Sheriff, I think you feel, but I think that's a, a sign of, of what's to come. Like, it's very difficult for small counties to even maintain an infrastructure. Like, I think, I think it's the way of the future, these small counties are gonna have to build these interlocal.
Yeah, there's, there's a, you know, the, the cost of, pretty, but I can see that, well, Hockley County is building, but most of the small counties can't afford it.
Well, if we can't afford it, I know they can.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can I, any terms on three things?
Uh, one, there was an accident, Alvin Bushland, uh, involved in road bridge, he's working on a road. And, uh, a guy drove through the work zone and the front end door, getting, uh, causing damage to his vehicle. Uh, it's in the hands of the insurance company right now. So he's saying it's our fault, um, B P S was on the scene, so.
Is anyone injured?
He didn't, so.
Anyone injured?
Nobody injured.
What, what is the?
Uh, I have the, the report, he said that he was driving in a work zone. Uh, he, of course, didn't have a license, uh, a valid driver's license. I'll let you know if it comes out of it.
Okay, there's no, uh, home executive session, agenda items for next time, I will be out of town on Wednesday. Anything else, or do you need to do?
Uh, just a reminder that our next commissioners court is government day, so we will be in the Santa Fe building, um, in the auditorium. And then for those elected officials that are joining us for lunch, you'll get your ten dollars to lean in, we're working on our final food count. Uh, every school is participating, we have over a hundred plus students, it's the biggest. So thank you to everybody who helps make sure that this day goes up without a hitch and it's exciting to see everybody come in. But quick reminder about logistics and then the ten dollars for lunch, so we can get that final.
Okay.
We're forward.
Okay, so nothing else, we are recessed until two P M. Is everybody ready? It is two P M and we are reconvening or I'm recessed on the topic number fifteen, funding for district course building project. I'm not gonna read it again, I'm just, I don't know what it's about. So Andrew, I'm assuming you have your name, course?
I do. Thank you, Judge. So over the last three hours since, since, uh, we broke, uh, we have a bid to underwrite from Frost Bank and the other underwriting syndicate. Uh, I think we've got a very good deal in hand. Carrie left a tax rate impact analysis, uh, in front of, in front of each of your chairs, as well as the final numbers. Uh, I'm not gonna go into a great amount of detail, uh, on the tax rate impact analysis, but it's structured fifty four million dollars for thirty years. The INS tax rate is not projected to go over a nickel, which is one of the parameters set forth, uh, going into this process. So we're very confident, uh, that, that we're able to, to get that done. We can run interest rates when we were modeling this from the start at four point one two five percent. The final true interest cost, which is roughly the average interest rate of this thirty, thirty year borrowing. Uh, and this number can be found on page seven of the active numbers. The true interest cost came in at three point three one percent. So we're very, very pleased, uh, with that. Of course, we try to be conservative in the process that, to account for the potential rise in interest rate. We've actually seen interest rates, uh, remain very, very low, uh, due to some more macroeconomic and headline risks out there like trade war with China. Things that have driven investors into, uh, both the treasury market and municipal bond market, uh, over the last several months. So we are the beneficiary that say.
What was the percentage, three point?
Three point three one percent in true interest cost. Uh, and so the difference in, in total principal and interest paid back from what we were projecting versus what we're finally logging means about seven billion dollars. Uh, of, of quote savings, uh, the total payment's gonna be that much lower due to this better interest rate.
So just to make sure I'm following, if I may, so you're saying the expected four point one two five percent, actual three point three one, and because of that variation. About a seven to eight million, um, recoup of debt we won't have to pay off.
It, it, it's not real savings, uh, but it's interest that, that you're otherwise not going to pay because we're able to get the, the interest rate.
Right, thank you.
But it's not real savings, we're just estimating, uh, a number to be in that. But, uh, so we're very comfortable that it fits within the, the parameters of, of the pro forma and the analysis that we had done over the last several months in conjunction with the code. Uh, the final numbers, uh, are here for us to review. Uh, again, I'll go into some detail, I'm happy to answer any and all questions that you have. I don't wanna get logged down in, in too many details with you all. We're gonna sell fifty million, three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in bonds. Because of the premium that the investors are going to pay for these bonds, still have a fifty four million dollars, uh, net of cost of issuance and, and all the related expenses into your project. So at closing on, uh, April sixteen, you will receive fifty four million dollars into this construction account. There won't be any wires going out to pay for different advisors, lawyers, et cetera. That'll be coming out of, of the, at closing. Uh, and you can see those expenses listed, uh, on the bottom half of the first page. Uh, cost of issuance, two hundred and twenty four thousand, underwriters discount, uh, that is what the bond purchasers, meaning Frost Bank, uh, Seabird, uh, Raymond James. Uh, and, and their cohorts, that's what they pay their sales staff to, to drum up interest in the bonds and then sell them to the various institutions who are buying bonds. Uh, on that note, we're very happy to report that Happy State Bank put in orders for four million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars of bonds. Uh, through that local priority that I briefed you all on earlier. Uh, so we're happy with that, it doesn't sound like a whole lot of money, uh, in the context of we're selling fifty four million dollars. Uh, but that is a lot of participation for a bank, uh, when we've done these prior, local priorities. Uh, you typically don't get a ton of, of local participation, uh, just simply because investors, meaning all of us who are investing our 401Ks, et cetera. Uh, you have higher yielding, uh, investment opportunities and so locking in thirty year debt at three point three one percent rate for the county. Maybe there's other op, investment opportunities for, uh, individuals. So we're very happy, uh, at the end of the day, it got four million, one hundred and ten thousand dollar order from them. Amarillo National Bank did not participate, uh, in, in buying any bonds either for themselves or for, uh, the trust department, which is the money they manage for their customers. So that is, uh, a bit disappointing, uh, but again, uh, Happy State Bank, they turned in some great orders, otherwise, uh, the issue is completely oversubscribed by, I think, three times. Meaning they received a hundred and fifty million dollars in orders for fifty four million dollar bonds. What that allows you to then do is then start lowering the interest rate and see some of, uh, those orders drop where people don't wanna participate. So it helps us drive down the interest, uh, cost on the bonds, uh, until we're closer to just being fully subscribed if by one time.
So that just drives down the market, that, that's the competition in the market?
Yes.
So oversubscription of it.
Yes, so then, you know, if it was two percent, we drop it to one point nine five percent and see how many people go away. And if we still have full participation, I'll underwrite the bonds at full time, so.
Was there a threshold that you started here, you know, because you expected four point one two five, after whatever threshold did, how many started to drop off? Like, what, where did you?
I, I don't have that information on hand right now, I'm kind of doing this from my phone and then my partner, Mark McLean, is actually in the office. And the underwriting desk of Frost Bank is actually handling all of that. Uh, but we do have a breakdown of the full quarter period, uh, and we'll, we'll be happy to pass that along to you all, but it's, it's just a, a whole lot of jargon.
Be interesting to know.
It, it, uh, I can show you the, the oversubscription, sure.
Any, any glaring reason why, uh, local participation, locally, the sense, Happy State?
I'm sorry?
Any, any glaring reasons why, uh, lack of local participation in this event?
Uh, not, not any glaring reasons, just they chose that, uh, you know, they didn't have any either of their own, uh, customers that, that wanted to buy the bonds. Or they themselves did, and I don't have really any additional color on that. Uh, it, our history as, as the Amarillo National Bank, from all the other clients we work with, it's within their footprint. Uh, they've never really had much of an appetite for municipal bonds, uh, but they expressed some interest in wanting to support the county here, uh, on this issue. And then for whatever reason, they couldn't make it work, I can't answer for them. Uh, so I'm happy to go through each of these pages with you, but you can see the individual pricing breakdown. Have bonds maturing over the next thirty years, you can see, uh, the coupon in the yield, uh, of each of those maturities. And then if you look at page four and five, it's gonna be your annual debt service payment breakdown. And it shows we're paying principal back on August first, twenty twenty one, and we're gonna pay interest semi annually. Uh, as is standard in the municipal bond market, starting February first, twenty twenty. And then our final maturity will be on August first, twenty forty nine. These bonds will become callable after ten years. So if there's, uh, funds available that you wanna pay off your debt, uh, you can certainly do that after ten years, we have, if that's a standard call feature. Uh, otherwise, uh, interest rates might be pretty low or refund this for debt service savings, uh, ten years from now, which we don't foresee being, uh, a, a possibility. Uh, and in the last page is just those bond summary statistics, the, the true interest cost that I referenced there, that's another thing. Uh, I'm happy to answer any and all questions that you have, but again, uh, we thought the underwriting syndicate did a good job, they were, uh, out there. And I think the, the pricing that they brought in, uh, is indicative of that, they have oversubscription, we dropped interest rates, uh, where they could. And we still were in control of, of the deal for two. On that nature.
Can you talk to Carrie?
No, I'm very pleased with how we ended up.
Carrie, one of the things, um, that we just, we need to be thinking about as this potential action takes place and we take on, I mean, I, I think about thirty years from now, I'll, I'll be seventy and I can ask anybody. I'll be ninety now. You know, I think about the long term, uh, debt ratio of the county, right? It's kind of what I wrestle with, right, in this threshold, we just don't do this every day, we don't do this amount every day. You know, what are things we need to be thinking about holistically for the county and that debt? You know, one of the things, like, uh, obviously we still talk about our, our county jail, and what does that infrastructure look like? We know we have the Santa Fe building, that historic piece of property, um, under our belt. So when I think about big infrastructure, no surprise, I think of facilities, but I guess my question is, in terms of where we sit with this type, potential action. Where do you see us in terms of debt and where, where should be, where should we be looking or not looking to take on debt?
Oh, I think it would be, I think we just got together and put together, put a long, long range plan together. Uh, because we've never really scheduled out, I mean, like, you're right, we know that jail issues and there can be a lot of potential march on.
But that's, that's also, that's also been a conversation, a strategic plan.
Right, yeah, I just think, you know, in terms of, of the market and kind of where we sat, like, and our new, um, debt policy that we, we just passed. I mean, we're on the high end of the debt we can take out for a county this size, I guess is what I'm just wrestling with. So I just, I wanna make sure that the players of the county recognize that, it's, it's gonna be really hard to do another project with debt. going to be really hard to do another project with debt, um, with a, a fairly significant amount of debt. So I know one of the projects is, you know, I know we've got the fire station, which is a different line item, kind of on paper, but then that leaves all the fleet and other things in our general budget, so it's like pulling from here versus there. It's just, it's a pretty significant movement. I feel like the county knows and understands it, but at the same time, those needs don't go away, so I still just wrestle with that debt capacity, is maybe a better word, of when we finally say we can't take out any more debt, because it's, you know, kind of crippled from the financial side.
But I think we had, well, Carrie.
As a what, I'm sorry?
As a need.
So do you have any concerns, Carrie, anything that does? Okay.
Okay, anything else? There's nothing else I need to motion in a second?
Uh, I think, sir, word is, sir, due to, uh, how many incidents relating to the issuance or sale of the public, public county taxes certificate of obligation serves two thousand nineteen, including the adoption and order authorizing the issuance of such certificates of obligations, so.
Motion? In a second. All available?
And I, I, for the record, I would, if it's possible, I'd like to say for the record, I still fundamentally believe this threshold should have gone to the vote as opposed to COs. So that's, obviously, I support the need, I understand the need, I'll be working alongside of the commission to make sure what we do, what we need to do to get this project done.
For the record, I certainly don't just think you, in concept, but understanding, again, when we sit on this perp, I think it's time.
For the record?
Okay, wait a minute. Two million dollars. We don't take notes for the record, we just take the motion with the notes. I'm just, I'm just.
Okay, sorry.
All for that.
No, we're not for the record yet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome, thank you all very much.
Okay, if anything else, we are.